I'd like to call to order the August first, twenty twenty-three regular meeting of the Chino Valley Planning and Zoning Commission. Could we please take a moment to silence all of our personal communication devices? It looks like we have a full commission tonight.
Is your microphone on?
Sounds like a, is that better?
Yeah.
Caught me. Now, we have a full commission tonight, Commissioner, um, oh my gosh, Switzer, would you please lead us in the pledge? Thank you.
Let's please to the land of nine hundred and thirty states of America and to the Father who he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the freedom of justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so item C has a item in it that is, uh, ZC twenty twenty-three dash zero-two, which is a zoning change, uh, for an existing complex. Um, we're gonna move that, excuse me, who, who's here for that item, the apartments? Right? Yeah, okay, so some last-minute information that was brought before the commission, we're going to continue this to the next month's meeting. Um, and I'm sorry you folks made the trip, but this information we have, I think this extra time will shed some light on some things. And so, um, I'm gonna remove it from the consent calendar. Do I need a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to remove item ZC twenty twenty-three dash O-two from the consent calendar and move it to next month's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
September fifth.
Pardon?
September fifth.
September fifth, date certain.
I make a motion that we move, uh, Consent Calendar Item ZC two thousand twenty-three dash O-two to the September fifth nineteen, or two thousand twenty-three meeting.
Planning and zoning meeting.
Planning and zoning meeting.
There's something in the air tonight, folks, sorry.
Humidity.
I'll second.
So we have a motion and a second. Do we need any discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. I'm sorry, folks, that you made the trip, but I think the time will be a benefit to everybody. You're welcome. Thank you, guys, for being patient with us. Okay, so now I would like to entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item C-five.
I make a motion that we accept the consent calendar, C-one, C-two, C-three, and C-four.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion's carried unanimously. All right, thank you. All right. Well, go ahead and you move forward to item D-one, which is a CUP twenty twenty-three dash zero-three. This is a request by Brian Greathouse on behalf of Store-It Arizona LLC for a conditional use permit for a mini-storage and RV-stories facility with a commercial-retail component on a parcel-zoned light, commercial, or commercial-light. Property is located at the east side of State Route eighty-nine, approximately a quarter-mile north of the intersection of State Route eighty-nine and Road Two North, Chino Valley, Arizona. Has anybody spoken to anybody or had discussion with anybody on this item, on the commission? All right, thank you. Hi, Will.
Hello. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Commission. Will Denji, Assistant Director here with the town of Chino Valley. As read, this is a conditional-use permit request for the Store-It Mini-Storage Facility here, new construction. The applicant for this project is in attendance this evening, so if there are any questions, uh, they are available to answer them. So the subject property itself is approximately seven acres in sized, size, and is kind of sandwiched between Mary's Furniture and Chino Rentals on the east side of State Route eighty-nine. To the west of this property is the current Store-It Mini-Storage Facility that's been in operation for many years here in the town. Uh, also to the west is the Primrose Inn, and then to the south, you have Sonic Burger King, Walgreens, and the Safeway Shopping Center. Uh, the property is currently zoned commercial-light within the commercial-light zoning district. They have the right to develop a mini-storage or RV-storage facility so long as they obtain a conditional-use permit first. So the proposal itself is, consists of two phases. Um, Phase one consists approximately of sixty-three thousand square feet of mini-storage, Phase two, roughly fifty-two thousand square feet. The entire property is landscaped around the perimeter with a CMU block wall for screening and security purposes on the storage unit portion. The proposal is, um, supposed to be on well and septic as Town Utilities is not in the area. Something special or unique about this project is that they are proposing a commercial or flex space at the western portion of this property that's right along or a butt State Route eighty-nine. This flex space is approximately two thousand square feet, consists of four offices, um, all sharing a bathroom facility. The bottom-left-hand image on the screen is a representation of what that building would look like on the front edge as you drive by it, once you look past the landscaping on the front. So that'll be its gateway. Um, all of the storage facilities and the office for the storage facilities will be tucked behind that, pretty out of sight, out of mind. Um, in addition to this mixed use for the proposal is, uh, the architecture style within here. It is more of a modern architecture style that's kind of unique to this area with the exception of the new police building, so it, it kind of emulates that going forward. So with those unique features of the mixed use and architecture style, that benefits this project as the general plan, the twenty-fourteen general plan, future land-use designation, puts this parcel within a potential community core. And within the twenty-fourteen plan, a community core calls for mixed use and unique architecture styles. Um, so it is staff's opinion that it satisfies the intent of the general plan and that future land-use designation, so it is supportive of this request. The neighborhood meeting was held on March second, twenty twenty-three. All subject properties were noticed within a seven-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius. No neighbors were in attendance. Uh, staff did receive one letter of opposition to the CUP. However, the property and the concerns referenced within this letter were regarding a different property, not the subject property. The property that that letter was about was regarding an active code case that is southeast of the subject property that is accessed via North One East. If you drove by that road, it is right across the, or drove by the property is right across the street from the elementary school, lots of RVs, um, ongoing code case currently. So the letter that was submitted is not applicable for this case. So with all of the facts presented this evening and with your staff report, staff does recommend that the Planning and Zoning Commission forward to Town Council a recommendation of approval for the Store-It Conditional Use Permit with the conditions of approval found in Attachment A. I'll go ahead and open it up for questions and discussion, and the conditions of approval are on your screen.
Anybody have questions for Will while he's up at the podium? So just a cou- couple of brief questions. One, just to make it very clear, the letter that we got is regarding a different property, not this property, because the Store-It facility across the street's a pretty nice-looking outfit.
Correct. The, that is correct. The letter references a property where that has multiple trailers, RVs, all sorts of things stored on it. Um, the property and, tonight, the subject property is a completely vacant piece of land.
Okay, good. Um, and then it's kind of similar in a certain way to the one we looked at a month or two ago up by Olson's Grain, is that correct?
That is correct. It has that commercial, the previous one for Olson's Grain does have that commercial aspect in the front, however, it did not have the architecture stylings that the Store-It proposal is offering.
Can you kind of explain the architecture styling a bit? I mean, I know what it looks like, but you're referring to something, I think.
So it, that is specific to, um, a requirement within this potential community core i- per the general plan. The general plan spells out that, um, within this community core, it needs to have that mixed use, but it also needs to have that unique architecture feature in order to be compliant with the general plan. Um, I think I answered what you were looking for.
Sorta.
Sort of. If I need to rephrase it or readdress it, I can.
This, the, the, it looks familiar to some of the other buildings along the highway, I guess, so it's, it's.
It's something, so the, the, the proposal are the pre, the one at Olson's.
Just bu- different businesses along the, along the highway. It seems like some of this, the way this looks, I've seen some other buildings that are kind of similar.
Similar to that, and it, and it does it, so it, it conforms with the existing architecture out there.
All right, good. Thank you, Will. Anybody else? All right, we may call you back up. Okay, is the applicant here? Would you like to speak? You're not required to, but if you'd like to, we'd like to hear from you.
Good evening. For your records, Madison Leek, and I just came up here to thank staff, and they've been working on this with us for almost two years now, so I just wanted to say that I appreciated their input and recommendation for approval, and if you have anything else, happy to help.
All right, we may ask you to come back later after public comment? All right.
Thank you, Chair.
Well, you, can it wait till then or no? Let's just wait till public comment. Thank you. That way we can get them all in one shot. Okay, I'm gonna open the public portion of the meeting for this item only. Um, we're gonna ask you to, we don't have let, uh, forms tonight, so I'm gonna ask you to raise your hand. I will call on you. Come up as I call you, and, um, when you step up here to speak, state your name. You got three minutes to speak. Please be polite, please be con, um, uh, to the point. And if you agree with most of what somebody else said, please say that, because we keep notes and that counts as much as if you spent twenty minutes up there. All right, sir, I see you raising your hand.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. My name is Larry Holt. I'm a resident of Chino Valley. My, I, I believe that people should be able to develop their land to some extent, however, the town of Chino Valley keeps working to maintain its rural atmosphere, and eight or ten storage facilities and seven more storage-building sales places on the main drag it down does not make us look rural. It makes us look like a slum. And I don't know if, if these businesses are even doing any kind of research with, they're gonna be competing with how many other storage facilities we have with the new one coming in at Olson's. It's, it's gonna be an entire town of it. Anyway, that's all I have to say, and thank you. Thank you.
Slow rider, sorry. All right, anybody else like to speak? All right, I'm gonna close the public portion of this meeting for that item, and any questions from anything, Will, you would like to add based on any comments you heard from the public?
At this point in time, Chair, no, I do not unless there's questions for myself or.
Do we have any questions for him?
Well, can you ask me, um, how many facilities of storage do we have in Chino Valley?
I have to rack my brain. We recently did a public records request for a specific study. Um, I want to say we have upwards of seven, um, between established and proposed, including this development.
Does that study include of the need of more facilities to be for the ti- town of Chino Valley?
So that, that data is used for that study. It's, so it's not a study that the town is conducting, it would be a private study.
Okay, thank you.
So that study could possibly be used for other people wanting, deciding the economic fate of a project they would want to do in the future.
That is exactly what their intention is.
Okay, great. All right, um, would the applicant like to come up and speak to the public comments?
How many units?
I didn't see you ask a question, I'm sorry.
Oh, Will, how many units?
Pull your microphone down to you.
How many units will they have?
Off the top of my head, I, I can answer square footage. That might be a better question suited for the applicant. Um, I do know that the, the square footage is just gonna be under a hundred-and-twenty thousand square feet for the units.
Anything else, anybody? Okay, thank you, Will.
You're welcome.
If the applicant would like to come up, we're gonna grill you.
Happy to be back up here.
Okay, so Gary's got a question, and then we're gonna ask you to respond to the public.
Uh, Vice.
The, the one question is, I'm, I'm reading this, and it says, uh, water facility is proposed well, and then a couple lines lower, it says City of Prescott Water is directly adjacent to the subject property. I'm just wondering why you want to do a well when you could tap into the City of Prescott. Have you had a discussion with the City of Prescott?
I think Will knows more about the one.
Kind of speak to the water, um, as far as we, nothing, we can't stipulate any connection to City of Prescott, but as far as preference to well or City of Presse- Prescott connection, um, that will obviously be on the developer's turn, um, or discretion. But I believe your question is, is there a choi- why, why would you choose well over municipal connection? Is that something that you can just prerogative?
I don't want to make something up. I think they probably, people with, you know, engineering degrees that I don't have, looked at it and figured out that was the best way to do it.
On site, is there just a, the only water use is landscaping and restroom for the management?
Yeah, it has to be a, you know, in the scope of things extremely low water use.
Yeah, so, uh, as far as the RV storage goes, is that only gonna be for running, you know, mobile units? There's no fixed storage back there like Conex boxes or un, uh, non-movable units or?
Correct. There's no outdoor-type storage where people might park something like that.
So it'll just be for RVs that are used RVs?
If an RV could go in a storage unit, that'd be the only time. There's no, there's no outdoor storage component.
At all.
I don't believe an RV would be short enough to fit in there.
No, not in the actual storage units. I thought there was some RV storage behind the.
Okay, so.
Another phase now?
Hang on one minute, because the, the title of this thing says Mini-Storage and RV-Stories Facility.
Yeah. Thought the back half was.
That might be, that, that's likely an error on our end. Um, the, I'm sorry. The Conditional Use Permit allows for mini-storage and RV storage. Their proposal is completely mini-storage.
Okay.
Okay.
That clears that.
All right, we'll have to keep that in mind when we make our motion.
Other than Will trying to, you know, get me in trouble with a typo.
Yeah, you almost got you shot down. You didn't even know it.
Well.
Um, so this is very similar to the facility. It's across the highway as far as mini-storage is concerned. We got s- small cubicles of, and in a long row and multiple areas around on the property that are secured with driveways and stuff to get in and out, correct?
Correct. You're referencing the Store-It.
Across the highway, yes.
Correct. This is just updated. As you can see, it has that little bit more artistic articulation in the architecture, and it's newer, and then there's also the office component, which I think is an asset.
Okay, and another, um, as far as the water goes, I mean, Prescott's water comes from us, so I kind of it's sort of like six of one, half a dozen the other. Um, anybody have any other questions for the applicant?
So do you own the one across the, the street as well?
Store-It owns both, correct.
So, so both be open and one's not gonna close when the other one's open?
No, and I think I can answer a little bit of the public comment on that as well. They let me know that they're at a hundred percent or near a hundred percent capacity at almost all times. Um, the demand is there, and they, you know, wouldn't spend the money on this if it wasn't.
Yeah.
And the office to go with this also, there's a demand for that, and then people can use the storage in conjunction with office.
Thank you.
So this is a big corporation or?
I, I'm aware they have this location, and I'm aware they have a location in Prescott.
So they're pretty familiar with the area and, and the requirements and the needs and the necessity, and they wouldn't be spending this much money for it if they didn't think it would work.
I think that's, said it better than I could have.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna close the public hearing portion of this item, and I would entertain a motion.
Mister Chair, I move to approve Conditional Use Permit CUP two oh two-three-zero-three as presented in subject staff report and information provided during this hearing and the conditions of approval in Attachment A.
I'll second.
Did we get the wordage RV-stories removed?
It's not in the motion.
Okay, good enough. I just don't want to make a mistake here. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? This'll be a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Penn?
Yes, no RVs.
Correct. There was not in the motion.
Yes.
Commissioner Matters?
Yes.
Commissioner Switzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Sizmudio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Passiat?
Yes.
Chair Merritt?
Yes. Okay, so I'm gonna skip having the votes be explained, because it was a unanimous yes decision. All right. You're welcome. All right, so we're gonna move forward to item D-two, ZC twenty twenty-three dash zero-three. This is a request by Louis Peskador on behalf of the Equity Trust Company to rezon approximately one-point-five acres from commercial-light to multifamily residential for the construction of an apartment complex containing fourteen units. This project is located at four-four-three West Palomino Road, Chino Valley, Arizona. Has anybody on the commission had any conversation with anybody about this item? Okay, well, I did. A gentleman that I know, uh, talked to me about it, not in any concern, but just mentioned it to me. This gentleman happens to be my estimator in my business, and he just brought it up that he went to the meeting. He owns a piece of property that's close by there, and there was no discussion about the whys or wherefores. It was just a comment that he made. So I wanted to make sure that was brought out into the open. All right, staff, presentation.
Good evening, everybody, again. Will Denji, Assistant Director here with the town. As read, this is a requested rezon from the commercial-light zoning district to the MR multi, multiple-family residential zoning district for an apartment complex located off of Palomino Road and Horizon. Uh, the applicant is in attendance this evening for any questions that you might have. So the subject properties, there are two of them, um, equate to approximately one-and-a-half acres in size. It is located at the southeast intersection of Horizon Way and Palomino Road. Uh, this property is pretty smack dab in the center of several commercial developments, commercial businesses. Uh, makes it a pretty walkable location here. Uh, to the north, you have Alfonso's, you have the vacant Shopko Building, McDonald's, Snap Fitness, CV Pharmacy. To the east, you have Circle K, Chase Bank, Up and Smoke, several businesses within that retail space. To the south, you have Casa Grande, Tombstone Tactical, um, May- Mayland Medical, and then to the west, you have the existing Mannequin Apartments. Uh, currently, this property is vacant. So as previously stated, this property is commercial-light, and that goes for the surrounding properties as well, to the northeast, south, and west. Now, that might jump out as, well, hey, there's no manufacturer, or, excuse me, there's no multifamily residential in this area. But if you go off of the existing uses in this area within the commercial-light district, back before the UDO was adopted, within the commercial-light district, it allowed outright for man, or multiple family residences. Um, so that included apartments, that included duplexes, it included triplexes. So within the immediate area of this proposal, you have a fourteen-unit apartment complex to the west, and then to the south, you have five duplexes and one triplex, which is at the southwest corner. This one highlighted in, in yellow here. So due to these existing uses, staff is finding that this requested zone change is in conformance with the surrounding area. General plan, twenty-fourteen plan, uh, does call for this area to be commercial multifamily, so the requested zone, zoning is in conformance. Uh, for reference, for the twenty-forty general plan, this area falls within a HMU area, which is a horizontal mixed use, which would allow for apartments as well. Uh, this does fall outside within the twenty-fourteen plan of the, uh, potential community core as well. So the conceptual site plan, um, for all intents and purposes, just demonstrates what the applicant's hope is for this project. If approved, the applicant will need to come through site plan review, hire an architect, make sure we have an architectural site plan that shows appropriate landscaping, access, utilities, drainage, whole design. At this point in time, the applicant is just seeing if the rezon is feasible. If it is feasible, he will expend the money um, to ensure plan meets code, uh, which will address all of those as, um, codified. So the proposal itself consists of two buildings, both of which are two-story. One is an eight-unit building and one is a six-unit building. There are two access points, one in the north and one on the west, and then the associated parking. Now, this project, as well as the surrounding area, they are all on well and septic, and the proposal is to be on well and septic as well. The closest you, uh, town utilities are on the other side of the highway at the intersection of Perkinsville Road and North One East. Um, so at this point in time, code does not require a connection to this. The applicant will be responsible to prove that the septic area is sufficient for the fourteen units, like the Mannequin Apartments have done across the west, to the west of this parcel, as well as being able to prove that the well can supply adequate water as well as fire capacity, so there will likely be an onsite tank for fire flow. Neighborhood meeting was held on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Sixty-two properties received a postcard as part of a custom notification radius, as shown on the right-hand side of your screen. Nine property owners were in attendance with the following topics discussed. So there's questions on whether or not the apartment would be market rate or low income, if the development would be on town water and/or town sewer, concerns on the impact of water availability with, in reference to the aquifer, traffic increase, concerns over existing road quality, concerns over lighting that would be used in the development. Now, the applicant is here this evening to discuss the responses for those if you have questions regarding them. So to date, staff has received one letter in opposition of this project. It did come in yesterday. Uh, this gentleman was not on the attendance records for the neighborhood meeting, so I do not believe he attend, attended. Um, he had eight points of concern. Uh, he had concerns over the large rate of vehicle traffic, dangers to pedestrians, air pollution, light pollution, dog noise, water level in the aquifer, water and sewer need, and then overcrowding. With all the facts presented this evening and with those found in your staff report, staff does recommend that the Planning Commission forward to Town Council a recommendation of approval for the rezoning from commercial-light to multifamily for the Palomino Apartment Project, subject to the conditions of approval found in Attachment A. I'll go ahead and open it up to questions or discussion, and I have the attachments of approval, or excuse me, the conditions of approval up on your screen.
Okay, anybody have questions for staff?
Do. So the current zoning, commercial-light, and the surrounding existing residential really doesn't conform to the current UDO.
In terms to the, so conform to the UDO in the sense of the zoning, the, the uses on the property?
Correct.
That is correct. So per code, the manu, or the, I keep saying, wanting to say manufactured homes, the multifamily uses on the commercial-light zoning would be considered unco- uh, uh, out of conformance.
Correct. And then also, the twenty-forty plan, which, uh, we hope gets adopted, horizontal multi-use, areas that are HMU are intended to be predominantly non-residential, and no more than twenty-five percent of H, any HMU center can be residential uses, which it seems it's way over twenty-five percent already, or at least twenty-five percent already. So would I be correct in saying that?
So.
Are you talking twenty-five percent of the whole area around it or of the property?
Of the area that's zoned that way. Or, or land use.
Can you bring it?
Can you pull up the map? Can you can you find the twenty forty? Land use map?
It's a pretty small chunk on the twenty forty plan. That's HMU.
We'll get there.
Yeah.
Who do we have? Sparklight? Can we yell at Sparklight?
How many units are in the existing apartments?
Across the street, fourteen.
Go to chapter three.
Yeah.
There we go.
Sorry.
You just gave it to us.
There you go.
Yeah, but the rest of the people can't see your maps. That's why we.
We've been cheating up here.
That's okay.
So this is roughly right.
I don't think it's twenty-five percent.
No.
Correct. The proposed isn't twenty-five percent, but including all the surrounding existing non-UDO conforming units.
I don't think it meets that.
As in the intended?
I don't think that the number of units that are there in terms of land area that's being occupied takes up more than twenty-five percent of the uptown center as identified in the twenty forty plan.
So it's this whole purple mob, whatever you wanna call it.
Correct.
And that would be the max twenty-five percent. In other words, what state is, it's intended to be predominantly non-residential.
Correct, but our limit is the twenty-five percent, and that's what we use. And that's what we will use when the plan gets adopted.
So would this be within the twenty-five percent?
I believe it would be. I don't know that there could be much else added to it in terms of residential, but I don't think this goes over twenty-five percent.
Can you, now that we've seen this, can you bring the site map back up? Not the not the site itself, but the area?
Yeah. You want the?
The ones, number two.
Number two.
So you can see why there is a jog in that thing, because to the west of it, it's it's residence and it's a residential area, but it's kind of a funny area in that there is a lot of commercial in this first.
Correct.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you, Will.
You're welcome.
Can we have one more?
You have one more?
The property to the south of the existing apartments, is that the septic tank for those apartments?
Correct.
That whole field?
Yeah, so he has, whenever I talked with the gentleman, he has probably about half of that is the existing, and then he has a I believe he said it is a double oversized reserve area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's what they plan to put on this, the new one?
About as close as as far as use and and setup, correct.
And they won't be connected?
No, and again, that's all, that's kinda out of Chino Valley's wheelhouse. That's the county deal. But that's quite a bit of area that's saved for that. That's that's good. Thank you, Will.
You're welcome.
Is the applicant here? Would you like to come up and speak?
I have a question, but the only I can say is that. I.
Would you please state your name?
Louis Peskador. Yeah. I like the the pro- the project, because I just drive through town a lot, you know, coming in and out of town. And what I see is that you only you have just like a what, two projects that are low income, section eight and things like that. And I it seems to me that you need, you know, the town needs something like that for people that are moving here, waiting for their homes to be built and so on. So that's why I thought the project would, you know, be good for the town.
So it's your intent to put it, if I can find the words on that.
Market rate apartments.
Yeah, you're gonna put in a market rate apartment, which is not low income, correct?
Correct, yeah.
Just wanna make sure that.
And what I saw was that Mannequin Apartments is a really nice project, and I would just emulate that all the way, you know, for aesthetics. Pretty much be, you know, committed to that on the looks.
Right. We'll probably call you back up after the public.
Okay, I think.
Thank you. Okay. We're gonna open up the portion of the meeting for this item only for public comment. Same rules apply as for the first one. Be polite, be concise. If you agree with the person before you, you can say that. I keep pretty good notes, although I write slow. So would anybody in the public like to speak on this item? You have to raise your hand, ma'am, but I'll cut you some slack. Come on up. Thank you for your service, by the way.
Chairman? My name is Virginia Foster. I live at the residence adjacent to the septic on the Mannequin Apartments. And I've lived there for twenty-eight years. And living here in Chino and seeing the growth and the lack of road repairs, the lack of infrastructure, and to wanna put in a high-density housing unit in a rural area is kinda not sitting well with me.
Thank you. You have any more you'd like to say?
I just, I I'm very concerned about the roads, the water availability. The the sewer, like I said, I'm right next to the septic on the Mannequin Apartments. And my well is not far from that, and that's a concern. And how much noise is gonna come from the the high-density housing and congestion? And, you know, if there's a fire, are they going for the cistern from the the shopping complex or or do they have provisions for water for that?
All right, anything else?
That'll do.
Thank you for your service again.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Nance. I live at five eighty Butterfield Road, which is about three houses away from where the proposed site is going to be. The current zoning of Commercial Light allows apartment buildings only with a conditional use permit and a minimum of eight hundred square feet per apartment. At the neighborhood meeting, it was stated that a conditional use permit makes it hard to get financing. Not saying that he was asking about that. That was just a comment that was made. When the new general plan is implemented, Commercial Light zoning will become horizontal multi-use zoning, which will allow less than or equal to eight dwelling units per acre. This one and a half acre project would allow twelve dwelling units, not the fourteen that are planned. The definitions in the general plan use an average of two point two people per dwelling unit. With two point two people and fourteen apartments, that's an average of thirty point eight people living on one and a half acres. The existing neighborhood around this project is zoned SR one, allowing one dwelling per one acre or an average of two point two people per acre. Land use policy LU eight point three of the new general plan considers dense residential to be equal to or less than eight dwelling units per acre. Any high-density usage is to be consistent with the current community character. It also must interconnect with areas, area amenities by sidewalks and walking paths. The current community character is single-family dwellings on one acre minimum, meaning this project is not consistent. I am unaware if the project intends to include sidewalks and walking paths. Land use policy LU nine point two of the new general plan recommends the old home manor area be developed for multifamily density residential uses. This would make a better site for this project rather than an SR one community. For these reasons, as well as increased traffic on already deteriorated streets, increased water usage, plus the degradation of our SR one community, I would request you vote to deny the zoning change. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? All right, I'm gonna close the public portion of the meeting for this item only. Will, could you step up there and answer some questions?
Fire away.
Okay, so one of the ques- there seems to be some concerns, because there's not much information, which at this point, I understand, he doesn't wanna
Correct.
invest a bunch of money in something that's not gonna go forward. Can you maybe address some of the processes that if it did get changed, what the requirements would be for the new development?
Sure.
Sidewalks, fire protection, roads, all the usual concerns that everybody seems to have?
Absolutely. I can touch on the planning elements, and then I could reference and point the spear over to Frank, so he can get the public works in. Uh, so for plannings end, you're gonna be looking at landscaping. It'll be a required ten-foot buffer streetside on both Palomino and Horizon, or Horizon. Insured parking standards are adequately met, insured ADA standards are adequately met. Visually, we're gonna look for any sort of ground-mounted or roof-mounted equipment, that that's screened from public view. We're gonna be evaluating lighting to ensure that everything is downlit, blocked, and then there's no tr- light trespass going on to ensure as close as we can get to a dark sky. That's primarily it. Our big chunk of the process comes through the rezone, ensuring that that land use does meet current code. Frank, could you speak on road, all the others?
Could you enlighten him about road right-of-way dedications and stuff like that?
Thank you, Mister Chair. I'll try and answer the best I can. And I work off, just wanna preface this, that what we work off of in public works right now is current code. I don't know that I can require items for site development.
I guess, I guess what I'm attempting to do here is to to bring forth some of the things that the gentleman under the current code would be required to do, not that this is specifically gonna happen, but just some of the things that normally happen when some kind of development like this occurs.
Sure, but I was just trying to address very quickly the com- public comments about the future general plan that hasn't been voted on yet. I can't address those because those haven't been codified for public works yet, so we work off what's current. And currently, current code and current policy, other than the internal building requirements through the Building Department for ADA accessibility and whatnot, on local streets where there are no sidewalks present, we don't require sidewalks unless it's a subdivision with lots less than one acre. So this is a single, what it would equate to a single lot development. And at this point in my knowledge, we haven't required off, what I call off-site improvements, improvements to the surrounding streets, adding sidewalks, adding lanes, unless the traffic analysis calls for it. Will analyze traffic for this set of apartments. I think would, is it fourteen apartments, Will?
Correct, proposed fourteen.
You're somewhere around ninety trips a day for fourteen apartments. And the way I I'm looking at that is compared to Commercial Light, it's probably a less intensive use than what is allowed outright with Commercial Light zoning. You could have restaurants or convenience stores, Will, I think, or
Uh, medical offices.
Medical offices. So your traffic count, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, because that book's about twelve hundred dollars and we're working on getting it, but uh but the developer will be responsible for providing that through the site plan process as far as the traffic impacts. But just my my judgment says that it it's gonna be equal to or less than what is typically in a Commercial Light zoning. I hope that helps as far as traffic. Same with water. I think the water usage would be similar or less than, say, a restaurant or commercial use that would be allowed here. So as far as the the use of the property to me, from a public works point of view, it'd be similar as far as water and septic goes. Fire protection, I would rely on the fire department for their code requirements.
But they they would require review as part of this next step.
Yeah, it'll go through CAFMA and they'll
Correct. Ensure that everything is met.
They do a study on it and determine it, and more than likely, yeah, there'll be some kind of storage tank put there.
And we would love to get water and sewer throughout the town with town utilities, but the the network's just not there. The closest we're coming is, we do have under design now, trying to get water and sewer under the highway at Perkinsville Road. But even then, it's still significantly uphill from this development. So sewer would have to be lifted. And to eventually sewer all of this project, we'd probably come up four north or some other alternative that's, because we're like the Nile, everything flows north. So that's where that would go, and it'd be no different than the other commercial complexes in this area. They're all on wells and septics at this time.
So just to be clear, you're, it's your view that this property is not gonna use significantly more traffic, utilities, and infrastructure than a restaurant or a shopping mall or any of the other things that are around this facility, this property now.
Right, and the, looking forward, the good news is, in about a year, we will have our master plan complete, and it will actually quantify some of the highest and best uses for water planning in in areas like this. But again, it's, we still have no future plans to install any water and sewer, but as far as you see, you're exactly right from from what I know, without putting specifics to it, it would be multifamily would be similar or less than commercial as far as the usage goes. The highest use is always agricultural, which is, goes against what some people like in this area. I'm not saying you shouldn't farm, but as far as water use, growing things is always your highest water use.
It's interesting that it's in in this area that people that live there, they could walk to just about everything in of any consequence in Chino Valley. As far as commercial facilities, residential, medical, restaurants, banks.
You were absolutely correct.
And I just wish we had better roads and facilities for them to walk on. We're working on that.
We're working on it, but given, given the resources and the attitude towards paying for roads around here, you're doing pretty good. All right, anybody else have questions? Yes, sir.
On an acre and a half of land, is it twelve units that's allowed or fourteen?
So, under current code, in MR zoning district, each unit requires three thousand square feet of land. So if we go off of the twenty forty plan, which I per- like, right now, I mean, we can discuss, but since the plan has not been voted in by the public yet, staff has no guiding presence. since the plan has not been voted in by the public yet, staff has no guiding presence off of that, we can talk about it.
What about the current code?
Current code says, um, multifamily or commercial here, and in MR zoning district, it's one unit per three thousand square feet of land, so you're looking at twenty-ish units for an acre and a half.
So even at the new general plan that we're working on, he's only two units over what the general plan would allow.
Says it's eight dwellings per acre, eight dwelling units per acre.
Right, and he's got an acre and a half, but uh, for twenty forty plan?
Yeah.
Correct, so twenty fourteen plan and current UDO is the one unit per three thousand.
So, right now it's good, and even if the general plan passes, which we all hope and pray that it does, it's not that far out of the realm of possibility with the fourteen units.
Correct.
Okay, anybody else have questions? We may holler at you again.
Alright.
Okay, so, um, would the applicant like to step up and respond to the public comments?
Lewis Pescador. Um, basically, what you're saying, that's what I saw when I saw the property, everything's real close to the residence, so it's not much, you know, uh, commuting, air pollution with some, uh, somebody sending letters saying about air pollution, because all the, you know, things are there that they need real close by, so, um, yeah, I mean, does anybody have any other questions?
So I got a question for you. Let's say you got as far as doing the civil engineering on this project, would you be willing to put sidewalks down the frontage of your property there?
I think that would be doable, you know, I mean, costly, but it's doable.
So you would, you'd be willing to do that?
I'd have to get the actual, to be honest, I have to price it out and see if it's feasible, you know, for the project.
But you're not against it, and it all depends on a lot of stuff, but as far as your heart's concerned, you're okay with that.
I'm okay with it, but like I said, it's always dollars and cents.
No, we want you to commit to everything you own right now.
Are there sidewalks in the area?
No.
I, there doesn't appear to be, and whenever I've ate over in that area, I don't see a sidewalk one. In fact, sometimes it's hard to tell what the roads are over there, no offense.
Yeah, there's no sidewalks anywhere.
Okay, anybody else have questions? Do you have any other comments you'd like to make?
Uh, no.
Alright, so I'm gonna close the public portion of this meeting. Thank you, sir. Before I call for a motion, I'm just gonna make a couple of observations. The density, the traffic, the concerns about fire protection, uh, the septic system, all of that stuff, they're all legitimate concerns, but without some sort of tax base increase in this town, none of this stuff is ever gonna come to fruition unless we decide to get together and vote to fix our roads, which I think would be a great endeavor. Not only fixing the roads, but getting together and passing a road bond that made sense and get some of this stuff fixed up that everybody complains about, but doesn't seem to be inclined to support. So with that, I'm gonna entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to appro- approve zoning change ZC two zero two three dash zero three as presented, subject to the staff report and information provided during this hearing and the conditions of approval in attachment A.
And we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second?
We have a motion and a second, do we have any more discussion? Alright, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Penn?
Yes.
Commissioner Metters?
Yes.
Commissioner Switzer?
No.
Commissioners Zamudio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Passiak?
Yes.
Chair Merritt?
Yes. And thank you very much for your comments. I'm gonna I'm gonna ask for the votes to be explained on this one, because I think it's important for the town council to understand not only the yes votes, but the no vote.
Okay, Commissioner Walker?
It kinda just fits with what's going on there right now.
Can you, I'm sorry, could you speak into the mic, sorry?
It fits with what's going on right now.
Okay, Commissioner Penn?
It's kind of hard to say no considering the surrounding area. I would say I'd be more comfortable with twelve units than fourteen, but that's just an observation.
Thank you. Commissioner Metters?
Uh, as far as traffic, most of the traffic isn't going to be going to the residential area, it goes to this property and residential is beyond that. Um, I think it's within walking distance of several businesses, I think it's a good location.
Thank you. Commissioner Switzer?
Uh, my concern is, uh, that it doesn't conform to the current UDO. It's a big concern of mine, also with the twenty forty plan, I think considering the existing residential that's already in the area, I think it's built out for residential, I think this subject property is too far east. Um, the HMU use also specifically says that they want a buffer zone between dissimilar uses and the whole area to the east and north is commercial light, a hundred percent. Um, I don't think it's the proper spot for this project, for the twenty forty plan or currently considering the current UDO.
Thank you. Commissioners Zamudio?
I feel it's in compliance, I think that the buffer is within reason, and I know we can't use the uh, new general plan coming up as far as looking forward, but what's in right now, so I feel that it admits, it meets criteria for consideration, so I say yes.
Vice Chair Passiak?
Well, it it meets the current general plan as to being, um, multifamily, commercial. The area around it is on well and septic, and so I don't see a problem with being on well and septic, I do understand that the fourteen units might change depending on what is approved for septic, so this might actually end up being twelve units instead of fourteen, uh, but that's something that has to be engineered out, and that's beyond the scope of this commission. I've, I hear the comments about road condition every time we have a meeting, and I would just like to remind everyone that in two thousand nineteen, the town had an initiative to have a tax specifically for roads, and it was voted down.
Chair Merritt?
Um, just to follow my own rules, I'm diddling all the yes votes, and I understand the no vote, because it is a different, and we are we are, um, that percentage of the residential to commercial, I thought was kinda low, but didn't push against it because the rest of the plan seems to be so well thought out. But again, when you look at where this place is at and what's going on around it, these folks have an opportunity, uh, to walk every place that needs to be walked to as far as everyday living. And and the other thing is, you're what, two blocks off the highway, so how much traffic can be generated in two blocks? It's gonna go out, or it's gonna walk, it's probably not gonna go west as a general rule, which is where the residential areas are at. And again, the town has little money to work with bringing infrastructure into place. Yeah, I think the town staff does a great job with working with what they've got, and to make another backup comment to my vice chair Passiak, we did have an opportunity to vote to fix the roads, but nobody wanted to pay for it, which seems to be a sticking point for that particular item, so that's why I voted yes, because it just fits the area, and we're creating one of those areas where people can walk and go do stuff without starting up their car, so that was my vote, yes. Thank you. Alright, now we're going to come to item D three, which is a conditional use permit. CUP twenty twenty-two dash oh one, this is the six month review of the conditional use permit. CUP twenty twenty-two dash oh one, or an equine rescue center owned and operated by Derek and Luis Arita, I know I'm saying that wrong, I apologize. Um, on a five acre parcel zoned SR two point five, a five acre parcel zoned SR two point five located at sixty or six hundred eighty South Fire Sky Lane, Chino Valley, Arizona. Has anybody spoke to anybody on this item?
Yes.
Okay, would you let us know what you did?
Yeah, we, um, I'm doing a last meeting after, spoke with the family, and we discussed, um, evidence and how to preserve evidence, how to use evidence to show discrepancies and what they've witnessed in the past of violations potentially by the applicant, um, explained that, and then, um, talked about, uh, her family specifically, loss of her family member. Um, but just that, uh, there are things I was gonna look into, things that were concerned, and which I have tonight to share with everybody, and that was pretty much about it.
Alright, anybody else?
I discussed the issue with staff.
Yeah, I've also had some discussions with staff, and at the end of the last meeting, I spoke with the applicant and encouraged him to stay the course and keep improving things, and it looks like he's done some of that. Anybody else? Alright. Okay, we have questions, Will?
Alrighty, so, um, kinda leave it at your discretion, I do have a couple slides just to recap for everybody listening at home tonight, um, if you want me to go through those, or you just wanna kinda get into it, I'll leave it to your discretion.
What's the commission's thought? Can you show us slides of improvement?
Absolutely.
Well, I think we should see those, we already know where we started.
So, let me get through here, sorry. So, I do have a slide on what the, pretty much crux of the issues were at, um, the seven eighteen meeting, and then the applicant's implemented solutions, um, if you want me to read through those really quick, some of them are
It would be good to do that, for the record.
So, some of the concerns that were brought up at the seven eighteen meeting, um, regarded inadequate fencing, fly control, manure cleanup, shade, drainage concerns, operating outside the hours of operation. Since those concerns were brought up and discussed with the applicant, town staff has had numerous conversations with them as well as um, several site visits to the property to to look at progress, and and these are the solutions that the applicant has implemented since the eighteen meeting. All cattle have been removed from the property and will remain off the property for the life of the conditional use permit. Fencing along the north property line was reinforced reinforced with new fencing material, and then a tighter weave pattern on the northernmost property to help mitigate that drainage, that trespass of, um, manure, debris, all of that, um, railroad ties were also installed in the areas of drainage concern concern to ensure no debris was debris trespass, excuse me, um, these railroad ties have gaps to allow water to flow through, uh, so it's not impacting anything, if, though if impacted, it would be the property owner, because the water would all back up on their property. An additional twenty by twenty canopy was opened up to the horses west of the existing pasture. Uh, the recommitment to the seven AM to seven PM Monday through Saturday for the hay sales operation was made by the applicant. Increased the number of fly net traps on the property, and then recommitted to that manure being cleaned up twice daily. In addition, um, there were several fire concerns that came up with the hay, um, so in addition to that existing fire extinguisher, the applicant has built a thirteen hundred gallon water truck to help protect the property from any potential fires that result from, um, potential in any of the hay. And then the applicant had, um, at the time of writing this, committed to hiring a ranch hand to supplement their efforts once once funding was available, but during one of the, or excuse me, during the site walkthrough that I had with Luis and Derek and his dad, or Luis, the dad, and then Derek last night, um, Luis did share with me that they have two ranch hands on, um, available that they're paying on weekends as needed. So with that, um, we did take pictures this morning to just, uh, really document these and excuse me, these improvements, um, I can blow these up here if it lets me, um. You do have the the tighter weave here for the, um, help with the debris trespass, the, uh, railroad ties that are along the bottom here, this, the fencing, I do have a better picture of that here. In regards to that, so there are, um, this was a topic that I don't think came up during the last meeting, is that there is actually two fences here, there is about a a five foot break in between what was that cattle pen, and then an additional property line fence that is, uh, has been constructed by the Perrers and and was constructed at the time of that meeting, um. Sorry, let me get these back, um. This is the new twenty by twenty shade, uh, that has been installed, uh, while I was over there yesterday evening in the rain, there was at least, um, seven of those horses underneath there, so they are utilizing it, um. Image of the water truck here, uh, that was, you know, the concern of fire was brought up, but the applicant has provided that. Uh, is there anything else that you're seeing that you would like to see blown up on this?
Um, has the applicant resisted anything that you've brought to him?
Absolutely not.
I didn't hear that.
Absolutely not.
Thank you. Okay, anybody have questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair, but I would like to bring up the fact that I was not at the special meeting, I was absent for that meeting, but I did watch the meeting in its entirety. And I, and I was at all the previous meetings, so I'm very aware of the
Yeah, and I, I didn't bring that up, because I knew, I knew that you had watched those meetings, we had a discussion uh, well within the open meeting laws, and, uh, he's extremely familiar with this item, because he was in all of the meetings except for the last one, and so I didn't feel that there would be any issue with him picking up where he left off. Alright.
I believe Commissioner Penn did have a question.
How long is the conditional use permit for?
Thank you for asking, um, so as as part of this with the I'll answer your question, the conditional use permit is is good for five years if approved by the commission tonight. There is a stipulated two and a half year review period that was, uh, brought up at the seven eighteen meeting in which staff and the applicant will present their, the CUP in its entirety and show, you know, staff will present any code compliance cases that have, um, been submitted, what the findings of that are, any improvements that the applicant has made on the property. Um, just kinda recap it again, uh, for your consideration, so five years if approved tonight, and that would be I believe it was from the date of council approval, which was December twenty second?
December thirteenth.
Thirteenth, thank you, Mr. Passiak.
It's right up there on the top, the attachment A.
You know, I should read sometimes, thank you.
You're welcome.
Did I answer your question, Commissioner Penn?
It's two and a half years.
Though, you will, it will come before the commission again, correct.
Anybody else?
I wanna make something clear of an issue that came up last, uh, meeting regarding the hay. Um, regarding the fire code, I wanna make sure that it's clear and everyone understands what, um, the compliance is is. And I'm reading this from NFPA forty-five point seven, under storage of hay, straw, and other similar agricultural products. And this is for the fire code. Um, forty-five point seven point one, hay, straw, and other similar agricultural products shall not be stored adjacent to buildings or combustible material unless a cleared horizontal distance equal to the height of the pile in maintaining between such storage and combustible material of buildings. Just so you know, you are in compliance, there is no issue with the haystacking and the amount that you have, there is no limit to the haystacking, so you are in compliance with that. So there's no issue with that at all, just so you know, okay?
Thank you, sir. Um, there was some discussion about possibly having a stepped uh, inspection process over the next six months, and step meaning frequent, going to once a month or something. Have we got some kind of plan like that, or is that something we need to stipulate, or what are we looking at?
I wanna say, did we end up putting that in there?
No, that would need to be stipulated.
Stipulated, so what I can say is that just by the nature of this case and how long this is going on, it will be on code enforcement's radar. I've instructed code enforcement to frequently drive by here, um, they are all familiar with, uh, this property, the Pereiras. They, it will not go unnoticed anything that is, um, substantial.
Would it be a huge inconvenience to the town to commit to going by there once a week for a while and then tailing off to once a month? Unless there's a complaint or an obvious problem?
Absolutely, we are definitely open to that.
So we could include that as a stipulation as part of the motion?
Correct.
What type of violation or what extent of violation would be required to put a stop on it or to cease that CUP?
So it would really be anything in, in. That violates these conditions that are before you, so if cows are brought back on the property. Um, if you're talking, they're getting hay deliveries at two in the morning, if they're working the field at two in the morning. Um, if there's anything where the shade i- is removed barring.
It has to be like, it has to be like a cycle, not just like one, one thing, okay, no, it has to be multiple.
Typically, yes, it would have to be a, a consistent violation, however. The. Seriousness of this is, is there, so I, I. Would be hesitant to just say that they would have to have multiple violations to do that, um, I, I. Would be comfortable bringing it back before the commission if they are in violation of their conditions.
Any other questions? Okay, so, thank you, Will.
You're welcome.
Okay, would the applicant like to come up and speak? You're not required to speak if you choose not to. I, sorry, couldn't hear you. Okay. I may make you come up to answer questions, so just be aware of that. Okay, so, I'm gonna open the public portion of this meeting. Uh, for public comment, again, the rules apply as the last few times, please raise your hand. I'm happy to call on you. Yes, ma'am, one second, I'm not done. I'll be happy to call on you, um, and you'll come up, state your name, you got three minutes. And be polite, concise and move forward, yes, ma'am, come on up.
Kathy Middlestead, I'm a resident of Chino Valley. And I think if I were this applicant, I'd be feeling like a ping pong ball right about now. This poor guy, he's done everything that this commission has asked for, he's done everything the staff has asked for. Uh, my heart goes out to him and no doubt, I'm in support of this project. When I look at these pictures and I look at some of the comments from the last planning commission meeting. It, it just boggles my mind, uh, this is a win-win situation for everybody. The applicant wants a CUP to sell hay, that's what started this. And look at where we are today. You know, it's a win for the town, he's got much, 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 much more. Regulations and stipulations because of this CUP. It's a win-win for the applicants that were against it because he's got the much more restrictive conditions. If he didn't have the CUP, he could have thirty, forty horses there, he could have his cows there. He wouldn't have to necessarily, unless it's a code violation, care about putting railroad ties against a fence. Or doing this or doing that, I've had horses for almost forty-five years. Nobody once has ever told me they're concerned about how often my horses are getting fed or how, how much shade they have. Nobody's ever commented that to me and I took excellent care of my horses. I, the only comment I have for you. The people that voted no on this project at last month's meeting. In reading their comments, people had concerns about this or had concerns about that or this or that. It's like, then why didn't you ask the applicant or the staff? More questions in order to get those cleared up before this went to a vote. My heart goes out to this applicant and I sure hope you guys approve this CUP. Cause otherwise, it's not gonna be good for the neighborhood or for the town.
Thank you. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Larry Holt again from Chino Valley and I'm a bit at confusion, I didn't make the last meeting, I was out of town for it, but I watched it on the, uh, feed. And it was my understanding, which is obviously wrong, that when the council sent this back with the stipulations. The next hearing was just to see if, if Mr. Perea and his father were in compliance. Which they were not only found to be in compliance, but substantial compliance according to Will's testimony. So I take care of a, a precious property a few doors down from the Perea's, I wa- I drive by that house weekly. Somebody at the last, uh, hearing said that they started work on it a week before the hearing, that is a flat out lie. I've watched him work on it since the hearing with the council in December. Will's been out there multiple times since December. He knows that they were working on it and if you don't wanna take my word and you don't wanna take Will's word, you can call county probation and find out when Derek arranged for them to have the workers start coming out. This work's been going on for a long time and for people to say it wasn't, that's just, no, that's absolutely wrong, it's false. Um. I don't understand why this went through another full public hearing because of the fact that he was found in compliance, but you guys know your rules better than I do. You can tell by my age, I was raised by a World War Two vet, okay, it was the greatest generation. I was raised to believe that two things in the world really mattered. You didn't lie, you didn't cheat or. Change things around from the world, the rules, um, I think continuing to change the stipulations for Derek. Is simply moving the goalpost. Making it further and further and harder for him to obtain and he's done everything that's been asked and I think it's cheating to keep doing that to him, I think it's just downright wrong. Um, he's got more, there's also testimony at the last one where somebody said he doesn't have to go through the same compliance as other rescues. No, he doesn't, he goes through about three times more. So, that's, that's just flat out wrong and I'm really hoping, I agree with Ms. Ms. Middlestead. It's a good system, everything is there, he's complied with everything, he's done everything everybody has asked. And I'm not a friend of Derek's or his father, I know him, I've donated some plants and shrubbery for their animals to eat and that's my extent of it. But this is a good project and it is clean and he's done everything he could and I ask you all to prove it tonight, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Alright, oh, yes, ma'am.
Uh, my name is Anna Sotelo and I lived next to them for twenty-two years. You know, before we moved here, we decided to follow the rules like everybody else. So, I don't understand why a people decide to move next to me and wants me to live the way he wants to. He needs to respect and be honest. I respect his desires, but he needs to respect me. I show proofs, I send emails, everything, all evidence to Will. If he doesn't wanna show it, it's his responsibility, I have some pictures, the next day of the meeting, last meeting. They was selling hay and, um, there was drone, blow, fly a drone. In my house when I was doing exercise to make sure if I was watching them. I walk in the morning, four o'clock in the morning and they was doing things in the back, selling hay. And I have the pictures I have with me if you guys wanna see it, so, I don't care. What kind of business he wants to have, the problem is if he should, he do in the beginning. The rules first to check if the place was. Property to have. The equinox or rescue animals, it will be different story. But he do backwards, so this is a racist or what, what is this? Now you guys gave the chance to fix this, to fix that, when he shouldn't do in the beginning and will not be here. I have so many things to do, I'm a hard worker, my parents, my kids too. And I'm wasting my time to be here. My mother passed away and I shouldn't have to be organize his funeral and I'm wasting my time here over and over repeating. And they supposed to be have to fix the things long time ago, I've been complaining ten years ago. It was piles and piles of manure and trash, they can see just the front area, but I'm walking in the back. He just put fence. That kind of fence is not property, if he should know what is a fence property for animals. Are you guys went and walked inside to see? I let you guys walk inside of my yard. And you guys can see the difference. Where I'm being seen. We let him pass many things, he trespassing my property several times. He break the rules unenough and you guys keep, give them the opportunity to fix and fix and fix, so if I want to do the same business.
Thank you. Alright. Okay. Would the owner like to come up and speak to some of? Oh, I'm sorry, didn't see your hand up.
I am Marcy George, I live on the opposite side as Anna and I concur with almost everything she has said. Um, the drone, I'm not a hundred percent positive is theirs, we have seen a drone in our area, we're within five miles of the airport. It is illegal to fly, why it's there, I don't know, we have seen it, we have picture proof of that as well. As far as their upkeep, yes, it has improved, but has it actually going to be that way from here on out? I don't know. They took the cows off, but they did that when they had the other arrangements going. What they did was they just took them down the street and put them at another neighbor's house. And that neighbor felt taken advantage of and so they asked them to be re- removed. Where they put them, I don't know, but I don't suspect that it'll be long before they're back. Pigs were supposed to go away too, for a while they did, I understand pigs are back now. That picture we saw up here with a horse standing under that beautiful cover. Ninety percent of the time, there's a red work truck in there, not horses. The twenty by twenty situation, may, maybe a sheet of some sort, maybe canvas. Is tied across to the stalls that the horses are in all the time. I know he's made effort, I am from a cow and horse background, I grew up on a dairy in Montana. I know what this all about, I know about how to take care of the flies, I've given them suggestions and they're not any better. My family and friends won't come to my home because of the smell and the flies. And I'm sorry, I, I just, I want to be for this, but I want it to be right. I want them to take care of things and to protect it and my neighbor sold, cost him two hundred thousand dollars to sell his property because anyone live next door to that. Property. And that's, that's unfortunate, that doesn't do a whole lot to say good things about our area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, the guy in the back had his hand up first and then I'll call on you next, how's that?
James Anderson, this resident of Chino. Um. There's a lot just being said. But this is a good thing and I'm just saying what I've said before. Derek is busting his butt to do everything that everything, uh, everybody asks. Something new seems to have been added almost every meeting. Three o'clock in the morning, four o'clock in the morning, I can address the lights they're seeing. His brother works at Ruger, he works nights, he comes home three or four o'clock in the morning. There, there is shade, the shade has improved, the building, the, the, the carport. Well, it's not, the, between the connects boxes, the cover there has increased the amount of shade immensely. They don't have a red truck, I can attest to that, I'm over there. A lot. Things are great, things are going good, la- last meeting it was addressed. If this is voted down, everything can go back the way it was, just about. Cattle could be back there, the only thing that's restricted in this town is swine, there are no swine there. But everything else could go back, he could bring the cattle back, but I can tell you, they're in a place where they're not gonna leave. We went to another property, worked on the fence that's being purchased. For the sole purpose of taking care of the cattle. If this is not approved, I'm not saying Derek would, that's not the way Derek is, he's not gonna. Just throw all cares to the wind and say, well, I'm gonna go back the way it was, he's not gonna do that. But if you pass it, the town has the ability to control it. And they have the ability to watch over it. And it is only in the fact that he messes up, removes the shade, brings back cattle, puts twenty pigs. That the town can do anything then, he's got the stipulations, don't move it again. It's worth it, guys, believe me, and ma'am, sorry, it's worth it. Keep the control, like I say, you guys have the advantage, ball's in your court, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Somebody back there wanted to speak, yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Lucille, um. Derek has improved a lot in creating the better. Has he come over and asked that actual the neighbors of what the concerns are for creating what he wants? It's not the proper location for what he wants, alright, we're trying to work with it. We're trying to make it so he can have what he wants and we can have a better life too, because we're gonna, we're neighbors. We got, we're living together no matter what. You know, we're not the only people that have complained, there's people that have moved from there, that's why you don't get that many complaints because people have sold already. Now, has he come over to us and asked us what our concerns are, our issues, have we? Thought about maybe getting a solution, you know, to find a breaking point to find, alright, fifty fifty, this is what we can do. Yeah, he took out the cattle, okay, perfect, you put a little fence, alright. Are you gonna put something else in there or are you gonna leave it out, what's the solution here, we wanna work together because we're neighbors. We're trying to figure out the breaking point, I'm just trying to figure out if he's gonna make it worse. Is he thinking about the neighbors or is he just thinking about the, say, his sales, his horses or anything else? I'm just trying to figure out what are the solutions here, you guys are the judges, you guys will, you know, add the rules and the stipulations. Yeah, maybe it's harder than any other equine here, yeah, but do they have neighbors complaining about the swine and the smell? Like I said, we can't have barbecues outside. Can you have barbecues outside? That's nice. There's so many flies out there. Is he spraying the manure, is he doing something, is he, we're just trying to figure this out, we're living there twenty-four seven. We're just trying to figure this out like you guys are, that's it. Oh, um, also gonna translate for Luis, my father.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Luis Fuentes. I don't consider myself the owner of the house or property, um, this is my family. What cleanup are you guys talking about? They grab a tractor and all they do is spread it all around. But to pick up and cleanup, they have not done. To reinforce. To reinforce the fence? What fence? They show that little fence, but it's not reinforcing our actual fence. Do you think a four inch foot fence that holds chickens and swine and goats? Able to hold a cow or horse, four thousand pound animal to prevent from crossing? He has talked to Luis several times to put an actual fence, like an actual rancher would. That would actually wanna prevent from animals from escaping his property. Last time he talked to Luis, he told him that he's gonna put it two weeks, a proper fence. He shook his hand. You got it? I'll put it in two weeks. It's been years. Another hand on the property states Luis and Pereira. Last time we saw Luis Pereira was in the meeting at his house. He is not here at this present. He hasn't been shown in the meetings at this present. But here, we have not seen him not once. It's an insult to us, to everybody here, and mostly to you guys, that he does not show himself here if he wants to have an equine rescue. If there's two balances, if one gives, you lose everything. Give and take. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Chair Commissioners Rachel Furno. I am an alternate planning and zoning commissioner and was part of the vote at the last meeting. I am happy to see the updates of some of the things that have been done, but I think my concerns remain. In regards to the fact that this is a neighborhood, there is a way to conduct your property, whether you have an equine rescue or not. And we should not have people coming up here that their daily lives are affected by this. One of the things that Commissioners Amudio and I spoke. With the family that has been speaking tonight about was gathering, backing up the things that they're saying because. How can we have two completely opposite point of views? One side is calling the other side liars. This side's calling the other side liars. To me, the neighborly thing would be for the applicant to actually say, let's have a sit down, let's talk about it. We're neighbors. We want this to work. That's not really the responsibility of the family that's been speaking. That is the Pereira's responsibility. If they wanna be in good standing with their neighbors, they need to take the initiative to not only clean up the property, but to make amends. For what has happened. That's the only way I really see this going forward. In a healthy way. I, I think that the two and a half year review period, especially considering the amount of misrepresentation on whoever's end about this project is. Completely out of line. I think at most, we need to see, as Commissioner Metters had stated at one point, how the upkeep goes through our winter season. I believe another six month review would be acceptable. But a five year approval with a two and a half year review period, I mean, that leaves a lot of space for a lot of bad blood to be created. I know it's not your job to be like counselors for the community, but. If I could say something to all the parties involved on this, it would be in your best interest to reach out to one another. This is a small community. And just find a common ground. Be a, be a good neighbor. The fact that these people are coming up saying that they can't enjoy their outdoor space, that they can't have barbecues, that their friends won't come over to visit them. I mean, these are. These are viable quality of life complaints. That they have a neighbor who doesn't seem to want to address that he is affecting the quality of life. For the people around him because of what his dream is or what he wants to do. That's just the best advice I could give and urge them to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So I'm going to have Will come up and answer some of these questions, please. And then we will get to the applicant. Okay, so anybody would like to start in this or? You want me to go for it? I did. I got a lot of them here. Okay, so. There's been comments that the town's not doing its job, that somebody's lying. Somebody's not reporting things correctly. Spreading manure, fence concerns. Uh, one of my questions was, and I asked this at the last meeting, I'm gonna ask it again, has there been a report of any animals escaping the man's property? Any animals?
Not to town, not to town code enforcement.
Okay, so nothing's been reported to the town about animals escaping the property?
Correct.
Okay. There's concerns about the fence. This, the. There was some comments about drones. I'll ask the applicant about that one. You probably wouldn't have any knowledge of that. Because this was continued to this meeting for another review. Was the applicant's ability to say hay, sell hay carried forward until tonight?
As far as his ability to do so?
Yeah. Did anybody tell him he couldn't do it?
No, we let him keep going until we come to a decision.
There was no final decision at the point. Okay, that's what I thought.
I thought I was told before that we, he could not as of that night. That was my understanding, and that's why I asked specifically that question. Can he sell hay after this night? And it was, the answer was no. That was one of my questions I had to follow up on. So why the change?
Well, it's a code enforcement situation and because you guys were gonna hear it again in two weeks. We let him, I mean, go ahead and blame us, but we've been dealing with this as long as everybody else has.
Understandable, but when we're told something and it goes back and no one's notified us of that, I got a problem with that. I mean, no one told me about it. My understanding was that that was gonna be taking place and say, okay, I can understand that. But then no one tells me or makes it clear to me?
I just don't remember that conversation.
No. I have a problem with that.
As far as we're concerned, it's, it's still ongoing until you guys make a final decision. And with most code cases, we allow them to continue to do stuff as long as they're making improvements.
But with the, the, when we had a three to three and it said there was no, it didn't go forward, it stopped. That made the stipulation at that point, my understanding from last meeting.
No, because you had one of the no votes say that they would like to reconsider it.
I remember that, yes.
So for us, we didn't reach an end until what happens tonight.
So then by being told that the three, three vote is a no, didn't make a difference?
Because at that same meeting, you had a no vote say, yes, I'd like to reconsider it. So for us, we didn't have an end yet. Tonight is the end.
Okay.
I would just add to that, that the hay sales between business hours seven to seven don't seem to be. Concerned to the neighbors. As long as they're within that business hours. I don't know what, that's really not a.
There was a stipulation made on that because it was done after hours before. That's why. That's why it came up.
Before, correct.
Yes, that's why.
Way back before December, I think.
One of the issues, I'm not trying to interrupt anybody, but this is a concern. There's been a lot of history here and there's been a lot of things said and things changed and people doing this and doing that and. I think probably for all of us up here, we need to focus on the fact that. We need to look at. Is the applicant making an concerted effort to do things? Is the town staff having issues with the applicant not complying? That's the kind of things I think that we should be focusing on now because. He said, she said, who's a liar? Who did this? That, that's. That's not gonna go anywhere. And I think for tonight. I think we need to just draw a line and say, this is, we're dealing with what's happening right now.
It's not our job to be law enforcement.
Exactly. And it's also not our job to go mediate wars between neighbors. I don't think I want that job. Okay, so. Anybody else have questions for Will?
That kinda brings up a question. Has there been any civil infractions reported?
So.
By anybody?
In the six month review period between December, council's approval in December and the July eighteenth meeting. There were, I believe, four complaints that were submitted through our online portal with CitizenServe. Each one of those complaints were investigated by code enforcement officers and, and determined that there were no violations.
Okay, but those, those would be town code violations.
Correct.
Has there ever been any civil violation by any party?
Through any property maintenance that. Per code, per code enforcement, there has not been any civil. Judgments made.
That would almost, I understand where you're going with this. I think maybe that would be a police department.
Exactly. Has anybody broken the law pertaining to these issues? And been cited for it?
From code enforcement, we have issued notice of violations, but it's never gotten to the point where a citation has been issued to appear before court.
Probably without the police department, that's as good as you're gonna get tonight.
Yes.
Okay, so. Thank you, Will.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'd like to call the applicant up. Pardon me. Oh, you have another question?
Is there anything that prevents another six month review?
I would say it's at the discretion of the planning commission if they wish to instill another six month review. What I can say is that anything that would come up within that six month review would likely be caught by code enforcement or we would receive a complaint. Via the neighbors. So i- if you would like a six month review, that would be the prerogative of the commission. Don't know if it's any relief of code enforcement's involvement and, and the process involved within code enforcement. But I'll, I'll leave that discretion to the planning commission.
Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that we can do is commit to you that whenever we get. A complaint and we do an investigation that each month at our meetings that we can share that information with you.
So maybe without specifically. Putting all the onus on this one parcel, maybe you could come before us with some updates on. Code enforcement issues.
Yes.
That might be good information for us. Okay. Thank you. Anybody else?
Just to clarify again, without a CUP, what is town code on? Hooved animals in Town Geneva?
Horses, cattle unrestricted, swine, one per acre. Everything else is unrestricted as well. So it is only swine that is limited to one per acre.
Okay, did everybody hear that? Without a CUP, he can have as many animals as he wants on his property.
Except for swine.
Except swine, as long as he doesn't have code enforcement violations.
That can't be a business. Or can it be?
Five oh one C three.
If he has a five oh one C three?
Correct.
What was the question?
He can be a five oh one C three, correct?
That's.
He just couldn't sell hay.
Correct. The, the conditional use permit is primarily for the sale of, of hay.
Correct. That's a huge. Huge portion of this whole thing and it has been since day one.
Now, the guy can do anything that, that's been fought against here except sell hay. All you've done is reduce his ability to make money to take care of the animals.
Correct.
That needs to be clearly stated here.
Correct.
Within town code, under property maintenance of, of parcels with agricultural entitlements, livestock entitlements, he can drag manure, he can. You know, property cleanup is, is pretty discretionary and our code for standards is very. Supportive of livestock keeping.
And I will add to that, that since being here from the beginning and seeing all this, seeing from day one pictures, seeing today's pictures, doing drive-bys. The improvement is very substantial. Very substantial. And that is all because the CUP. One hundred percent. As far as getting along with neighbors. That's something you gotta do on your own. Both parties need to do that on your own. I have neighbors. Do I get along with my neighbors all the time? No. You do your best. But the CUP doesn't. Apply to that portion of it. This is about. Animals.
Anybody else?
Is there a downside? To considering another six month review? From your side of it?
From our side of it, it's, it's.
Is there anything wrong with, with. Requesting a six month review?
Just would be staff time. And then.
Let me ask a question this way. Do you see any significant? Authority or. Change that could be made by bringing it back in six months or letting it operate as a CUP and with regular inspections? In other words, if we come back in six months, we're gonna go through this whole thing again.
That is correct.
And that, and all he's gonna do is keep doing what he'd have to do under the CUP. So is there a substantial benefit? For extending this another six months so we can all sit here again for three or four hours? Running this thing around the block. That's ridiculous. Sorry.
And you've already committed to giving us updates.
Updates on it. I, I would say in, in my professional opinion, as, as code enforcement supervisor would be. That it, within the six month review period, if there's anything substantial occurring on that property that is in violation of the CUP. It will be being, it will be brought back to the commission for reconsideration regardless.
Before the six month time period is up.
Correct.
That makes sense. Okay, anybody else? Thank you, Will.
You're welcome.
Don't count yourself out. Okay, I'd like to have the owner come up and speak for a few minutes. We're gonna ask you some questions. So I'm gonna ask some pointed questions unless anybody else wants to jump in the middle of this. You're free to do so at any point. We've heard comments about drones. What do you say about that?
That's my neighbor, actually. My father and, and others were very concerned about that and we, we found that that was the. The neighbor in particular that was spoken of before that decided he was gonna build his house right next to my house. And knew me until he wanted to complain to the town. So this is, this is the kind of neighbors I have.
So what you're saying is that's not your drone, unequivocally, without question, scouts honor, I'm gonna sue you till you're blind.
Well, thi- this is what I've been dealing with, you know.
That, that's good. We're good. That answered the question. Okay. Are you spreading manure or are you hauling it away?
May I elaborate on that? Because Will was there seeing me load my dump trailer today and hauling that manure.
I guess what I would say is if you tell me yes or no, that's gonna answer the question.
Yes.
Do you haul your manure away or do you spread it on the property?
We haul it away.
Alright. There's some concerns about fencing. There's some concerns about fencing, have you had any animals escaped that wasn't reported to the town?
No.
None?
None.
Okay. The fence, I saw your fence, it uh, it's a great improvement. I think you could work on it a little bit more to make it a really cool fence, and that would suffice. I don't believe it's intended to keep animals in or out, I think it's to sieve the manure so that it traps it before it goes onto your neighbor's property, is that a correct statement?
The fill fence was erected to hold the cattle because the, the fence that was taken down, that these neighbors actually took down, the whole fence line, they took a chain link fence down and won't, won't hold cattle or any other animals. You need fill fence, barbed wire, those kinds of fencing's to, and some other types of fencing to hold in large livestock.
It seems to me, though, that you have a barbed wire fence that runs parallel to that, is that the one that's intended to keep the livestock in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, so basically you've put the other fence up to answer concerns about debris traveling through along with the railroad ties and the drainage issues.
We put that, yes, we did that after, we had fill fence before and it was holding livestock in there as well, if they would, if I let them out to eat weeds on the other side of the fence.
Okay, so. This question of getting with the neighbor and the zoning commission being involved in that, that's a no fly zone right there, we're not doing that. I would strongly encourage you, and I'm sure both parties, not just you or you, have made attempts to work this out. I would encourage you to keep making those attempts. You, sir, seem to have moved forward quite a distance, that is good. So I'm gonna leave that at that. Okay, anybody else have questions, comments on this with the owner?
No comment. You've made a great, a great improvement, and I have seen that from the very beginning. I'm being more hard on you, if you think I'm just, you know, picking on you, but no. I feel you have more of a duty, cause it's your business and encroachment on the neighbor, okay? You have done a great job, I agree with what you're doing, I always have. It's just that I wish you guys would just be able to work it out. I think you're on, on a good track of doing that. Has been a great improvement, just so you know, okay? I wanna look at codes to make sure everything is, is good, the codes, you're, you're good with the codes.
I would love to work it out with my neighbors and not be on this.
And, that's great, and I, I totally encourage that, please, continue, try that. But um, just so you know, there's been improvement before and I have seen.
Thank you.
Um, there was one other thing, I just had a thought on that, and I gotta remember what the heck it was. It's terrible being an old person. Well, I'll maybe come back to it here in a few minutes. Anybody else have questions for the owner? Yes, sir?
Do you have any plans to ever bring cows back?
No.
Never?
Never. I feel they are much better where they are, and they have more land, and it's, it's a, it's a better zoning. So that's why we decided we were gonna move those cows.
So Commissioner Penn helped me remember what I was gonna ask you, there was some mention about two volunteer ranch hands? Not volunteer, but you're paying them on the weekend?
We paid them, and there was one that was coming during, during the week as well. We paid them to help us get these things done, like that fence, and, and where the, where that cover is, we fenced it up so, and opened the fence so the horses could go under there. We, and, and did some other things around there, so that was what we were doing, we were paying them because we had limited time, and I needed the man-hours to get the work done.
Okay, so you have, you have the ability when needed to pay help to take care of the place?
Correct.
I'm gonna say that again, you have the ability, if needed, when needed, to pay help to take care of the place to meet the CUP requirements?
Yes.
Okay, I know I'm sounding like a lawyer here, but I'm getting short fused. Um, the other thing is. Yep, I'm gonna let that go. Thank you, sir, anybody else have questions for the owner, while he's, oh, I know what it was. There was some discussion about your father not being at these meetings, have you, has he given you full authority to act in his behalf?
Yes, he, and, and he was in communication with me actually, tonight on the phone, I was reading messages, and he was, he was telling me that to, you know, some things to say and, and talk about here.
Is he here or is he somewhere else?
He's not here, uh, my father, um.
To ask a personal question that you don't have to answer?
I guess you can a- a- ask the question, uh, but may I, may I make a statement?
Yes.
About him, um, so he's a, he's a veteran of both Brazil and the US, and so he has PTSD, and so with this whole thing, I mean, he was having he was telling me, I'm having flashbacks here, you know, and, and I was talking to him, he was on edge and just, just uh saying like, you know, just go away, like, stop talking to me, cause like, you know, I don't want, I don't want to talk about this right now, and I'm like, okay, you know, we'll talk about it later. And so he's like, if I come up there, I, you know, I may lose it, and I said, yeah, I will, I will stand for you.
So he's given you permission to speak?
Yes.
Okay, that answered the question. Anybody else? Alright, I'm closing the public portion of the meeting. Thank you for your forthcoming there. Um, I'm gonna close the public hearing portion of this meeting on this item. And I'm gonna reiterate a couple, reiterate a couple of things before I call for a motion. One, there's been a huge improvement from beginning of this endeavor to today. Second thing is, the applicant has full rights to go back and have fifty cattle, seventy cattle, whatever. One pig only, that's been made very clear, if he wants to, per acre. Don't get technical on me. And then um. So he could, and, and to state this clearly, that's not something that he has held over anybody's head. The only people that are saying that are us. So it, this is not a perfect solution, absolutely not. But it is the best solution available at this point, with measures in place to continue inspections, and to make sure that he follows the rules of the CUP, which he is voluntarily doing right now. And Will, I'm counting on you not to let me down here. So I'm, that's all I'm gonna say, I call for a motion.
Can I make one more statement?
Pardon?
One more statement?
Yes, sir.
Can I urge uh town staff and council to look into changing town code as far as hoofed animal maximums in the Town of Chino Valley as soon as possible? Thank you.
Anybody else? I'd entertain a motion, and don't forget to, I've got a stipulation I wanna add on the way through.
Chair, I'd make a motion, but I don't have the motion.
Pardon?
I don't have the motion.
You did get the motion.
There you go.
It's not on there.
It's not on there.
Well, it's not on there.
Yeah.
Come on, Will, what's up?
It's a continuation.
Can you put it up there so we can see it?
I'm, I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Move to approve conditional use permit two zero two two dash zero one, as presented, subject to staff report. Information provided during this hearing and conditions of, of approval and attachment A, with the stipulation of once a week inspections for three months, if successful to go once a month until two and a half years.
Understood.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Commissioner Penn?
I'm gonna say yes.
Commissioner Metters?
Yes.
Commissioner Switzer?
Yes.
Commissioner Zamudio?
Yes.
Vice Chair Passiak?
Yes.
Chair Merritt?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
And I'm not gonna ask anybody to explain anything, cause we've talked this thing into the dirt. But I will say that I, we hope that our waffling in the past just sends a clear message to the city council that this is the best that can be worked out as far as we can do, and if they wanna add stuff to it, that's always their opportunity for sure. Okay. Prior cases to town staff.
So we've had, and I can't remember if we talked about it last time, but the last case that came through the commission prior to tonight was the rezoning for the Red Cinder subdivision. Twenty acres off of the southeast corner of the intersection of Red Cinder and North One East. Um, so twenty acres, AR five to SR one, it was heard by town council, uh, this was that item that the commission stipulated the applicant to enter into discussion on utility connections. Um, it was talked heavily at that council meeting and ultimately was continued to the August, the um, last council meeting in August, which will be reheard with um new information regarding the utility connections.
August twenty second, twenty second.
August twenty second will be reheard again.
So there was good discussion on that, huh?
Heavy.
That's awesome. That's awesome. Anything else? Alright, so um, does anybody on the commission have anything they'd like to make a statement on?
No.
Anything you wanna comment on? Alright, so this is where the chairman can have his say. I just wanna reiterate again, this is not something that we take lightly up here, what we're doing. There's a lot of public uh feelings one way or the other about this. We're doing our very best to deal with things in a factual manner. I think, and wanna thank the commission for listening and hearing and dealing with the facts and leaving out as much as possible the emotions that we see and hear at every meeting. And again, to reiterate, roads, New grocery store, all that stuff that people come and say at every meeting, water, septic systems, cost money. Anybody that wants a pony up to the bar, they can sure do that, and be happy to have them donate as much money as they want towards the roads in this town. But it doesn't really seem to be that big of a concern for the people who have lived here for a long time. That is interesting. And so the people who live here for a long time, they're okay with it, cause they don't want Prescott Valley, they don't want, they don't want that saddle blanket thing at the airport. They want Chino Valley just the way it is, and that's okay. And that's, that's, we all moved here for, seems like that particular reason. So just made that comment. Anybody from the public like to step up to the microphone and have something to say about anything except what was on the agenda? Okay, now I'm gonna say this very carefully, you can't talk about anything that was on the agenda just because we already went through it. Alright, you're welcome, and you say, say your piece.
I'm Martha Anderson, I just wanna tell you guys thank you very much for putting this to bed after so long. Uh, we all greatly appreciate it, and I do wanna tell you, Luis isn't here because he's ill, but he sees it, I guess on the TV or however he sees it, okay, but thank you. Mister Zamudio, degradezco. That means I appreciate it, thank you.
That's good for us unknowing folks, thank you. Alright, so item F, motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn?
Okay, we moved in second and we already voted.
Yeah.
Yeah.